Good afternoon, everyone. Are we set?
Yes.
Remotely? Okay. Good. Okay, do we have any visitors today?
No.
No, no, no. All right, then we will start with our land acknowledgement. All Spokane Public Library buildings sit on the traditional homeland of the four bands of the Spokane Tribe of Indians. Upper Band, Middle Band, Lower Band, and Shewilah Band. Since time immemorial, the Spokane Tribe of Indians has lived and cared for these grounds, identifying themselves as flesh of the earth. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging. We show gratitude to the land, river, and peoples who have been fishing, hunting, harvesting, and gathering here for generations. May we learn from one another's stories so that we may nurture the relationship with the people of the Spokane Tribe and to all those who share this land. Okay. Can we take a look at the agenda? Any adoptions, any changes?
I do have one change for that.
All right.
So Agenda Item Number 15B, the EPA Community Change Grant, that will no longer be presented by Tara Newman, it will be Nicole Edwards.
All right. Anyone else? All right, and let's move to an approval of the January 21st, 2025 Board Minutes.
I have a change to that as well. For approval of the meeting minutes, in the minutes portion, it says November 2024, it should say December 2024.
Anyone else?
Well, with that change, I move to approve the January 2025 Board.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. We have one motion and a second. All in favor, if you can, by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes. And January 22nd, 2025 Special Meeting Minutes. You need approval?
I move to approve the January 22nd, 2025 Special Meeting Minutes.
Thank you.
Second?
Second. Any mission, any other thing that anyone wants to talk about during this approved Special Meeting Minutes? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let's move to the approval of the December and Period 13, 2024 Bills and Contributions. Motion to approve?
Move to approve the December and Period 13, 2024 Bills and Constru-- is that correct?
Can I modify that really quick?
Yeah.
I apologize, we have a transposition I did not catch.
Okay.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
All right. So move to approve that in the total of $2,146,169.35.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So it's done. And now, Item Number Eight, Approval of the January 2025 Bills and Contributions in the form of $1,021,171.10.
Move to approve the January 2025 Bills and Contributions in the amount of $1,021,171.10.
Second?
Thank you very much. Any opposed? Any discussion? All right, motion to approve? Aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Okay. Those are approved. And now, over to you.
Thank you. Thanks for the changes, I appreciate that. So, this one is going to include the 2024 financial summary, as well as January operations. So I'm going to start with the bond fund update and then move on to operations so that it's a little bit more cohesive from a thought-provoking perspective. So for the bond fund update, uh, let's see, so contracts executed for the end of the year, or at least in January and in December. We did have some extensions that we, um, that we pushed through. It was for Group Four and Hill International, just to extend the contract end date. Because originally, we were planning to have that done by December 31st. And as you know, the construction's still underway, it will be done later this spring. So just kind of pushing those, those dates out for paperwork purposes. And then here's a comprehensive list of the 2024 encumbrance carryforward into 2025. These are outstanding commitments in the form of contracts and purchase orders that are currently either underway or we're waiting on final closeout letters from the Department of Revenue, and then there's some retainerage. We've also got project management and A&E outstanding as well, but will still be greatly expensing through the rest of this first couple quarters in the year. This is the list of obligations as required and promised during the budget adoption process. So at that point in time when we adopt budget, we don't know what that carryforward will be. So this is part of the closure of the budget adoption so that you have this on record and so you can kind of see what, what we have outstanding. So the $719,124 is now the established budget threshold for 2025. We'll not continue beyond that. It's been fun though. So here's just another quick summary of the budget by category as far as what we earned in interest on, and then transfers from city, E-rate reimbursement and transfers out on top of the original proceeds of the bond, which were $77 million. The transfers in from city, just a reminder, so that was $406,75. That occurred a few years ago, and that was for the construction of the CSO tank that was required here at Central during, during the remodel. The E-rate reimbursement, so those are technology discounts that we get. It's a federal discount as a library or a school. You do have, you get to take advantage of an 80% discount when it comes to internet and purchasing tech that's used for education. And so that transfer out to operations was that E-rate portion as well as reimbursable costs that were for the STA lease and moving costs that we, that we expended as a temporary location while we were under remodel. So following that, here's, again, are just snapshots of our overall budget by site for the $83,612.91. And then below that, we can just see what our overall encumbrance remaining is. It ties to the encumbrance carryover figure of the $719,145. So we really just, we've got less than 1% remaining to spend, so it's pretty exciting. We're really on that home stretch. It's really just the Nevada kiosk that's, I guess I'll update on the next page, sorry, getting ahead of me. It's exciting. So it's ahead for 2025. We're going to continue to activate that, manage the active public works projects so that 24/7 kiosk install as well as the site construction for, for the Nevada Dome. Currently, the dome structure is actually complete. It is at least the, out the bones that are. The panels are not yet, are not yet installed on that. The inside structure work is currently underway, so the restrooms and the IT room. Electrical work actually begins this week. As, I don't know where that's at at the moment, but I know that they're working on getting that mapped out this week. And then the 24/7 kiosk is planned for installing by the end of March. That's currently a stopped date, so we're waiting to schedule the technician for that through, through MK Solutions, once we have an actual solid date of when that install's going to happen. We will be wrapping up the notice of completion. That will be brought, so that's for Alpine Contractors, that's going to be brought to the board for, for approval before we send that notice of completion to the state. Other final documentation and paying retainerage on, on remaining projects as well as A&E and PML. So, and then upon final closeout of the projects, all of that documentation will be boxed, boxed up. We'll probably have a good 10 to 20 boxes worth of stuff because of all of the invoices, all of the paperwork that's, that we've been accumulating over the years since the bond started. And, and that retention requirement from the State of Washington for an unlimited tax general obligation bond is 30 years. We'll send that offsite and be done with it for a while.
Do you have a live track version of all of it as well?
Yes. Yes, we do. Like to have that on hand in case an audit occurs, we don't have to go digging. Are there any questions on bonds? We did not have any activity in January for the bond because we're undergoing the encumbrance carryforward process, so we didn't pay anything.
There, this is not bond related, but is there any sort of timeline with the dome structure and placement on the property?
It's already placed there.
Oh.
Yes, the, it's, it's already set up. I don't have any pictures. Do we have anything online?
Just got to take a field trip up there.
Yeah.
That's exciting.
Exactly.
I have a question related to that also. Actually drove past it the other day on a way, on the, on a way to a field trip, and it is so cool and so exciting. And the person who was driving was like, oh, what is that for? And I wondered if there, if it was of any value to put in a sign that could kind of get people excited about what was to be? Because there's no obvious indication that that is something from the library or that it's like a growing partnership. Like, there's a lot to be excited about or like coming soon. I don't know if there is even budget or interest in that, but, uh, which is curious.
We've been working with a company on branding, co-branding that site. And we can check with Amanda when she's back to see what the next steps are.
Thank you.
Any other fun points or thoughts? Okay. Moving on to the library operations for 2024 year end. So we did close the year with the ability to pay 122, 122 days of operating costs. We started the year at 143 days. So as you know, we kind of gradually go down and we see a bump every time we get our levied dollars. Let's see, so the balance when we closed the year of our investments was $6,309,209. That does include reserve and net of encumbrances. For the expenditure trends, so I'm just going to right here cover December and Period 13, and then move on to the overall annual summary. So for December and Period 13, the expenses were $1,570,889. $999,442 of that was personnel costs. Does include an additional accrual from January. That accrual amount that gets posted back to 2024 was 10 days of the paid period, was just under $243,000. So books and materials purchased were $185,570. Our annual subscription renew for our Folio software, which is for the Integrated Library Services, as well as Communico, which is our customer portal for doing reservations and catalog holds. Those amounts were $83,546 and $19,664 respectively. Utility total, utilities costs were $53,366. Interfund charges posted in the amount of $48,519. We paid $39,095 for our third-party security guard services. We also did a replenishment of branch operating, safety, and facility supplies. So that means that those, all three totaled $36,018. Typically do one at year end and then beginning of the year as well. All right, so following that, here's a list of the 2024 encumbrance carryforward for operations. Similar, same as the bond process, this is just a list to show you what will be additional budget threshold established in the 2025 adopted budget. So just a couple items on here. The main one was the books, the capital books that were ordered in '24 were on backorder. We've also got some software from Talking Tech where it was ordered, but there were delays on when they're going to actually process that. And then the other items, so the MK Solutions and Swype, most of your pictures, those are already now paid. So those are just on backorder and we're waiting invoice. So total budget carryforward was $28,059.35. Now for the 2024 year end results as a snapshot from an income statement perspective. So you can see here what our budget was and what our actuals were. So revenue overall came pretty close to reaching what we had budgeted. A little bit short on some of the grants and SPS revenue as, as we estimated based on 2023 activity. And then for expenditures, the following pages, we're going to get into more details, but you can see we spent all of it. And just a side note too, the expenditures total does include the encumbrance amounts in it, just for purposes of what we've actually dedicated at that budget. So a little bit deeper dive into the financial resources. So we've got our tax-related revenues shown up top, but then our non-tax-related resources were $601,652. You can see we have some activity here from friends of the library as well as the foundation. Foundation may seem a little small this year, but just a reminder, they had a large, large support towards the end of last year in the amount of $35,000. Total last year was $56,800, so we're still spending on that as well. Let's see. So in other program support, we've got $43,320 of about $122,000 is Q1 through 3, which is a state grant we have with EBSCO for the Folio developer. So that's a project employee that, that we have and they cover part of, of their wages. You can see here, we also got the cooling and heating centers. I was just, I'm going to call that out this year because it's a new item. Total cooling center amount that we received back from the city was $11,344, and the heating that we received back from the city was $13,004. Event space, that's a little bit newer one in, in recent years. That's actually pretty close to what we receive in fees as well. So you can kind of see that that revenue and support is, is really great. We've got a couple weddings and some exciting stuff. I expect that to ramp up even more this year. So our central parking lot, that's basically what our proceeds are after Diamond takes their cut. They do have a $3,000 per year flat fee. They also retain 35%, of the revenue. So that's just our, our net, net amount, parking garage. Interest income, we received $203,443. So based on our average investment balance, the return on investment there was about 3.25% return in this year for 2024. Other miscellaneous revenue, that's going to, that's capturing, a lot of that is SPS, an invoice that they paid that was actually outstanding in 2023. So that was paid about mid-2024. Also, there is E-rate money that's in there, so $47,470, which is, again, that's that 80% discount that, that we get for providing internet and education technology to the, the public. So below that is an overall snapshot of our expenditure, budget versus actual, just from a percentage utilization, utilization snapshot. You can see some areas were a little bit over and then some were under. It all nets out to basically 100%. We'll get into those details in the next pictures. Have some water. Get to hear me talk a lot tonight, sorry.
The cooling and heating centers amount, is that something that's pre-calculated by the city based off of number of additional hours or is it a percentage?
I input that, so when staff fill out their time cards, so the hours that they work in addition that were, that were open outside of that scope are coded so that we know what the staff cost is. And then we also have a prorated amount of what the additional utilities cost is from when we're open versus when we're closed.
That's really helpful.
So that's, that's what I was trying to get at, is are we breaking even with those additional?
Yeah.
And we've been told we would not be asked this year for additional hours.
Sorry, can you say?
We would not be asked to open additional hours.
In 2025?
In addition to our standard hours or in addition to what we left?
In addition to our standard hours.
Oh, okay.
That's guaranteed?
No.
Purple commitment.
Yeah. I mean, based off the super cold week that we had recently.
Yeah.
That was surprising. All right. We've got lots of open hours. It's a nice warm place. Okay, so a review of the staffing costs. As you can see, the salaries and wages are actually over budget, but benefits are under, and that might look a little bit goofy. Basically, what, what it is overall, we were under because we do have vacant positions. So we've got the social services manager and the current affairs specialist vacancies, as well as earlier in the year, we did have the security guard positions open. We didn't hire them right away. And then also there's some savings when, when there's some turnover. So while, while we are hiring for a recently vacated spot, there's always a little bit of cost savings there. So that is offset on salaries and wages with what we overspent on pages and substitutes, as well as some of the overtime. So overtime, we were over budget by about $26,000 out of grades. So essentially, if you're doing a task, if you're performing a task that is of another job description outside of yours, then you do get, get out of grade pay. So we were $20,000 over budget there. For pages and subs, overall, we were about $170,000 over budget. We typically don't budget 100% of that because it's always offset by the vacant positions and turnover that we have. So traditionally, that's pretty much a wash. So overall, we did overspend for our staffing costs by, or sorry, we were under by $116,000. And just a quick reminder too, is when you're doing some of this, when you're going through the budget process, you're looking at two years prior. So the 2025 budget is based on 2023 actuals and so on. So this would have been based off 2022 actuals since the 2024 budget. We're, we're, of course, as you know, there's no overtime for, for 2025, and so we're kind of looking at that. And then we've got our hours potentially changing here tonight as well. So that's going to have, have some additional impact on what that, what that overtime and, and wages look like. As far as the supplies, so overall, we spent 80% of our supplies budget, $372,551 out of the $471,410 budget. So we were underspent on our computer replacements as well as our general operating supplies. That was offset by some overspending, particularly in our facilities department. We, we did adjust for inflation, but some of our costs for filters is much higher than, than it's expected. And last year, it was about $6,000 per filter, and this year, it went up to $8,000 per filter, and they used to be $500. That's been a big pain for, for that. Doing what, doing what we can, we're still getting them as cheap as possible, but all right, everything clean. That's kind of all of the excitement on the non-supplies that I can muster up. So for services, overall, from, from what we've spent on services versus our budget, we were over by about $75,000. You can see that top line is really the, the big one for permits and registration and other fees. So that line item does include the $157,000 that we spent on county elections for our levy-liver ballot measure. That typically was paid for by the city, and so that was one of these surprise expenses that, that we had this year that was not part of the budget. Everything else was pretty on par when it comes to our services. I will highlight some of the contracts. Oh, actually, one thing I wanted to highlight was travel. Just because we, we do have a lot of awards that we receive as well as our work in Folio. Our travels have been pretty extensive in recent years, all for very big reasons. But another part of the education and training portion was the tuition reimbursement. So we did spend about $21,000 of, of our $25,000 budget on a total of eight different staff members. So just a cool shout out to that program. It's really exciting to see people taking advantage of that and us growing, growing our, our staff. It's pretty exciting. So I do want to highlight some of the contracts for the spending. So overall, we spent 200, about 281,000 on contracts. So our HVAC and security monitoring and elevator maintenance all come to about $119,000. Our kiosk and self-service check software and service level agreement is about $75,000. And then a lot of our customer-facing service software agreements are about $68,000. Just a lot of the different technology that we have there. And then for professional services, we spent $131,764. So a lot of that, a chunk of that, so $43,000 was what we paid the third party for our full stack developer, Chris Brown. He was originally contracted, but we moved him over to a 10-seasonal position to take some advantage of some of what the library offers for staff there. So printing and advertising and media was about $33,000 worth of that professional services. Other software service agreements, like web function and things like that, were $24,000. Our E-rate and federal filing costs, we pay a third party to do all of that filing. It's a massive job and would almost need another FTE to do it. So that cost is $10,500 for the year. And then a courier service is about $10,000. So those are all the exciting points on that one. Here's a snapshot of our utilities. Basically, right on par for budget. Overall, we're a little overspent in some of the areas. Some of that is attributed to us being open additional hours as well. That was reimbursed by the city. And then we did see some cost savings on the central branch because of our solar panels. So nice to see those, those in, in action. All right, so here's a snapshot, snapshot of our interfund charges for the year. So we did budget $321,540. The city does establish that budget, just a great reminder. New this year was the city indirect costs. So that was 100, just about $125,000, but was also not expected as an additional cost to us this year. Will continue in coming years as well. What that indirect cost covers is the city clerk's office, it covers city council, it covers public affairs and communications, it covers finance and legal, and the mayor, and HR. So that, these CFOs started that as a direct cost recovery to try to mitigate some of their budget deficits they're expecting. Let's see. Centralized accounting, so that's essentially our payment processing and payroll. IT expenses and replacement, it's really the access that we have for software. Things like our budgeting software and our financial management system software. And then we've got fuel, MySpokane is our, essentially our banking. So we do all of our DPP projects through them. That's a pretty self-explanatory. And then here's a snapshot of our capital, so operating capital and improvements. For building improvements, we did see a total of $12,700 for repairing the central gates, the RFID gates. We did have another repair for $8,600, which was a broken window just outside of public service, or sorry, support service each year on the north side of the building. We had another cost at Indian Trail, which was $9,200. And that was to install the fire system as well as the rewiring of the central processing unit. So that's all dialed in for the year and going forward. Books and materials, that one's pretty self-explanatory. That does, again, that does include that $17,000 budget and covers carryover amount. For machinery and equipment, we did have a carryover project totaling $58,000. That was a 2022 network cable upgrade. That was offset with E-rate, so our net cash was only 20% of that $58,000. But for recording purposes, you have to record the entire expense amount for capital. We've got central furniture and the break room addition that came out of operations, that total was $54,000. We also had some, some of our self-check stations had some replacement parts that were required. That totaled $7,500. There, there is an agreement that you can sign up for, so there's like a goal. There is an agreement that you can sign up for, so there's a gold service level agreement, a silver service level agreement, and bronze for all of those kiosks and self-service check out stations, but it's very expensive. And so for purposes of government contracting, we just felt that we would go with the cheapest one, which means that we do have to pay for our parts. But that has more than the right move. So the difference was about ninety thousand dollars. So, yeah. Anyway, I just thought that was a very rewarding number to see at the end of the year. And then for other improvements, sixty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-five. So fifty-five thousand of that is for the Nevada site. So those are additional permits and scope of work, like the sewer pipe and different things like that, that actually loaded into the operations side that were not covered by the bond contracts. Another repair we had was South Hill was ten thousand six hundred, fixed some pavers that were really dangerous. We did have a small one at Indian Trail, but it was under five thousand, so it did not be captured on this capital list. Any questions on the 2024 data? I know it's a lot of information. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to January 2025 for operations. So our cash and investments trend. So for the first month of the year, we have the ability now to pay ninety-eight days' worth of operating costs and available cash and investments. That balance is six million sixty-three thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars. Just a quick notation, I know from December, we had the hundred and twenty-two days, but how that gets recalculated for the new year is what our adopted budget is divided by two sixty-five. So one day of operating cost is now forty-five thousand two hundred and eighty dollars, which is almost seven thousand more per day than last year. So that's why that big drop in days. And then before I go to the expenditure trend, I did want to disclose any major budget variances from what was adopted versus what the city ended up publishing. So on top of the reductions that we did approve, so as you understand that three hundred and seventy thousand seven hundred of those were reduced from our budget, but on top of that, we also have the inter-fund charges. So we did adopt three twenty-one five forty, same as last year, because I was in the process of negotiating with city with those, the inter-fund indirect costs that we were being charged for. So what ended up happening is the inter-fund charges that posted are four hundred and sixty-eight thousand six forty-five. The main portion of that is the indirect cost increase. So the increase compared to 2024 year was seventy-five thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars. So originally, what we were calculated to pay for just that direct indirect. Wow, that sounded horrible. For the, what the CFO is trying to save in direct, in the, how did he word it? I'm sorry. Direct recovery. Thank you. Sorry, thanks for being patient with me. So for their direct recovery charged to us as an indirect cost, it was two hundred and ninety-two thousand four thirty-eight for 2025, and so I was able to negotiate that down to a hundred and ninety-nine nine eleven. So I saved about ninety-three thousand there, but being very stingy.
Nicole, can you just remind us what those indirect costs include?
Absolutely. And that's part of my note here, too. So. It is for city clerk, it's for council, it's for public affairs and communications. That's one that I have them get rid of for our portion. It's for finance, it's for legal, for the mayor, and then for HR. And HR is the other portion that I have them take off. So the communications and HR renewables, about ninety-three thousand.
Because we do our own internal.
Yep. We have departments specifically for both of those.
Right.
Like, this isn't really fair.
Okay.
Trying to keep it honest, for sure. Thanks for the question. So, and then to disclose the other increase for the inter-fund charges apart from the indirect portion, is the office performance management increased by twenty-six thousand two nineteen, and the accounting services increased by thirty-two thousand five hundred. Those are, the accounting services, I anticipated would go down because it's based off your cash flow of payments that you send out two years prior. And our bond payments drastically dropped, but their cost, their transfer coverage drastically increased, so we still ended up seeing an increase there. So after, now that I've let you know what the budget changes that are major, and all of that is in the supplemental financials that are behind all of this report, just to summarize that. So for the expenditure trend for January, expenses were one million twenty-one thousand one hundred and seventy-one. Of that amount, five hundred and twenty-six thousand two hundred and seventy-seven was for personnel. And again, that's reduced by the, that 2024 accrual amount, two hundred and forty-two thousand, that got posted back to period thirteen. Our capital books and materials were one hundred and ninety-six thousand two eighty-one. Seventy-four percent of that was for our annual subscriptions that are for public use software. So we usually see a very large front loading of those renewals in January of the year. Our insurance premium payments, that paid out in the amount of a hundred and twenty-two thousand seven seventy-one. We paid for self-check and the book kiosk annual software licensing for a hundred and one thousand four thirty-one, up from the seventy-five thousand that we paid last year. We did stock up on the cleaning and maintenance supplies again for thirty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. And then the 2025 total for bot exchange software is twenty-two thousand seven oh eight. That's that new one that we have for both staff and public data, basically getting our Vision 2030 plan in place. So that's pretty exciting on that one. Any questions about January operating? That's it for me for now. I'll talk to you soon. Thank you, Nicole. Yeah.
Sure. All right. Have a written report submitted. Some of the highlights include, I was able to attend a library legislative day in Olympia earlier this month, speaking with state legislators on, I can speak to them about that. Digital equity, the financial and sustainability of the one percent cap on property taxes, as well as unfair ebook pricing, where libraries really in the hopes of starting a conversation around getting a study established that would implement more fair practices between the vendors and libraries. Also attended the public libraries of Washington and HUANDU's Washington Board of Trustee meetings. Lots of discussion on the impact of the new administration on the future of the cultural sector. Lots of worry around federal funding in those areas. Danny and Shelby and I were able to conduct the new trustee interviews at the end of January, and a recommendation was made to the mayor that will be now moving along to city council in March. The candidate we selected is Alexi Castilla. They are the Jubilant Justice System Improvement Manager of the Department of Children, Youth and Families. Great volunteer experience with the Spokane Homeless Coalition, as well as serving on the Diversity Advisory Council first, I don't even know how that happened, for the Spokane Public Schools, as well as a resident of District One. So I think that we have a really high caliber candidate. We interviewed, invited thirteen to interview twelve, and we had over fifty-five applications to interview. So really great response from the public and willing to serve on the library board. The process goes smoothly and steadily moving forward.
Now that I'm embargoed, can I hit you with a remark?
Yes, yes. We will. I'll also try to set something up.
That'd be great.
Yep. But yeah, really great response and looking forward to hoping to work with that in the future. We just go back to back to back to back.
That's a super fun day.
It was super fun day. Thank you for that.
But it actually was.
Did you do it all in one day?
Oh, yeah. Wow. No breaks.
I served the.
Enter that business. What you get through.
We'll have to have another conversation. I'd love to hear how that.
It was very efficient.
Great way to spend a rainy Friday.
Exactly. For our DEI focus, staff had a conversation about mobilityology, and we discussed that in comparison to a cast by Isabel Wilpersen. Really thoughtful discussion. And our next book will be Wordslam, which is a feminist guide to taking back the English language. We hosted two bigger events for Black History Month, one being Poetry Rising and the other a community practice. And we also had a blog post for recommended meetings by April Rivers Everhart. April is the interim editor for Black Lens, chair of Spokane's NAACP's Education Committee, and a counselor at Shave and Roll. As far as collections go, really, the highlight is us bringing in this formerly CMTV into our library family. We now house the server, and we will be intentionally progressing slowly with programming that moving forward. The first, the first goal was really about getting that server here and housed under our operations. So moving forward with that. Our star spotlight for January went to Cara Drury, working for, working some Excel magic for some of our inventory processing, so thank you to Cara for pushing us further along. It'll also be open late this Friday for all staff development meeting or event, so we're looking forward to that as well. I was also able to meet with my new council liaison, also Margaret Kitzke, welcome, to answer any questions in their new role as our liaison, and also to get a conversations started on our long-term funding outlook. So hoping to get a work group together sometime after April to really lay the groundwork about what we're going to do to maintain our operations moving forward. And also, we will be presenting our draft Vision 2030 process and document to cabinet in the next month or so. So looking forward to getting their input. As far as cabinet goes, there has been some reorganization around the cabinet meetings. They're going to be a little bit longer, but more intentional. There's going to be some breakout subcommittees as part of cabinet, one being community safety and emergency response, the others, housing and economic development. I'll be serving on that subcommittee, hoping to, you know, really solidify and possibly get some more coordination around the startup Spokane, as well as hoping to further our model that we have with thrive, the community space, within private development, hopefully be pushing that along as well. And also, I'll be more clued in with some of the services around the young house population as well. Transportation and infrastructure is the other subcommittee. HR and operations is another. I'm glad I'm not part of that one, because those are not library issues, those are city issues. And the other is community communications and engagement. I'll be serving as co-chair on that subcommittee with the city's communications director. Any questions for me?
I have a question. When you spoke about library legislative day?
Yes.
Did you say you're, I just wanted to get some more clarity on the pricing of ebooks for libraries. But that's not a Washington State issue, that's a national.
It's a national issue, certainly. So we're just trying to get the power of many voices at the table. It's been an issue for well over a decade since we started offering out the materials. So really, to get some buy-in there, I think ultimately, the goal is to look at some sort of subsidization, still didn't say it right, but we're just going to move along, for libraries, so we can better serve statewide in an e-access format for library materials. A lot of the rural libraries can't even afford to provide the service. So a lot of libraries throughout the country receive substantially more dollars from the state as compared to Washington libraries, so looking at an avenue in the future to possibly get more state dollars.
So I'm curious, in addition to that, has there been any discussion within the state or perhaps nationally about an effort to negotiate on behalf of the libraries as a collective?
Yeah, ALA generally takes that up, American Library Association.
Yeah.
It's just we haven't seen much progress.
Okay.
So we're trying to find our opening for it.
Is there like a purchasing model through the ALA that?
No, no. It's all, what happens is a lot of these vendors, you know, they'll negotiate based on population side and things like that. A lot of them won't allow for any sort of consortium these days. And it's, it's often not about the end user. It's more about the profit. So they're not always looking at how can we best simulate these items. It's really around the end goal, which is profit.
Yeah.
In fact, we're, there's a lot of, there's a, there is a cooperative within Washington State for the materials. It's just we're not small enough to be part of it. And from what I hear, they also wouldn't allow for some sort of consortium to involve them. They abandoned that one. Yeah.
Thank you.
As someone who is dealing with similar challenges, I'm headed to DC next week for a series of meetings in and around. Are libraries going to, are planning to do the same thing?
They usually go in May, and I've been to those in the past. I'm kind of keeping my eye on it. Let me get my notes.
I will do that, and I will keep you posted as we start.
And I, and I know humanities on the Hill will be in the first or second week in March. So very similar. A lot of the humanities organizations throughout the country are about fifty percent or so funded by federal dollars. Our big, our biggest allocation that relies on federal funds is really our E-rate dollars, which Nicole spoke about prior. Over a five-year period, that's about half a million dollars for us, which is a nothing. But that does allow us to provide a lot of the technology that we can to folks that don't have access to it. The hope is, since those, since those are through telecommunication dollars, and really the FCC just acts as a pass-through, that it would just be reorganized in some sort of different way if there are changes at all. if there are changes at all. The other sort of vulnerability we would have is the state library. They do receive IMLS dollars, Institute of Library Services. And those dollars are used to help subsidize some of our database purchases as well.
About how much is that?
I don't know how much it saves us, and I don't have the number offhand of how much is used at a statewide. But I think those dollars, I don't know. It's, it's kind of passed along to us in the overall charge that we receive and we'll see the negotiating.
Anything else? I can hear you.
Good, how are you?
Good. Welcome.
Thank you. Sorry I was late. I was testifying virtually a housing hearing today. Where one of the many things on our legislative agenda is supporting the creation of land trusts here. And who knows, that could in the future allow providers to do more public partnerships with the library. I'm not sure how much we're doing that really is of interest to the library board. The general fund does seem to continue Graham's sales tax numbers were not great in the period 13, which it's like Andrew already knows. So we're going to be continuing to, to struggle with tight, tight finances along with the state. Going to Olympia tomorrow with the Association of Washington Cities will be there. Myself and two other council members will be there for tomorrow, the next day. I have a lot of meetings scheduled, so if there's any library legislative agenda items that I should know about, please let me know. I'm also not above showing up to legislators' offices without me. So if there's somebody I should talk to, that's not on my list, I'm happy to try.
Thank you.
Last thing I'll mention, the council will be bringing up a response to our series of roundtables on housing and homelessness issues. Coming up, it's going to be kind of an omnibus piece of legislation. And very much a compromise since the community was so divided on those issues. Probably nobody's going to be happy with it, so be ready to see that coming up by the end of our published agenda and give us your comments. I promise you we're not going to be able to make everyone happy, but we're doing our best to try to solve the problems and still, you know, preserve and address public safety and the economic issues that people are concerned about as well. I think that's all I have.
Any questions or comments? Thank you. Okay, Leanne, how are you?
I'm doing well, Gary. How are you?
Good. I believe it's your turn.
Excellent. Well, I wanted to first off say that January was really all about Library Learning Week. Thanks to these three individuals right here who helped align a wonderful just gamut of events and programs that our programmers were able to offer the community. We saw over a 30% increase in gate count during Library Learning Week compared to last year and about, about a 34% increase in event attendees. We also take into consideration we had two additional days compared to last year. So that definitely goes into that increase in numbers. However, we still are slated to have an increase even given that number. So it was really incredible, just such an absolute success. And we've already scheduled dates for 2026 to continue Library Learning Week because the incentive to kind of package what they already do into this really fun packaging of, you know, attend an event and win an e-reader, it just seems to work for our patrons. They get excited about it. A lot of the people who, who attended an event kind of already, it was expressed, they already kind of knew about the e-reader entries. We had over 400 people enter to win and the three winners were just so excited to get their e-readers that were donated to us from the foundation. So we were really excited about that. In 2024, or in 2024, in January, also completed the annual report video and the report that's also in front of you, which we'll go into in a little bit. We did a lot of communication both internally and externally about the discontinuation of Hoopla, which goes into what you were previously talking about, about the cost of digital content. Hoopla was a very expensive platform. It was a pay-per-checkout situation, so it was very, very costly. And we tried to mitigate costs over, you know, for a long time, but it just did not end up being something that we wanted to continue with moving forward. So as of the end of this month, we are discontinuing Hoopla. We have sent out initial communication to patrons, talking points for staff, and there will be more communication the week that it ends as well. We launched a replacement vendor for the museum passes. Through the, through, with your library card, you can get museum passes to the Museum of Arts and Culture, the MAC, and to Mobius Science Center. It's an incredible partnership we have with them and we were able to launch with a Spring Share product. Spring Share is the company that also has one of our email providers. And so we were able to create this new partnership for museum passes. It's going really, really well, already super popular and really booked up basically through April. Very exciting. And then our president of AAF over here, she, I have to give her a shout out because the, the AAF organization, American Advertising Federation of Spokane, put on a wonderful event called Empower Her and it had a panel of amazing people, including our Varian Amanda Donovan. She participated and talked about what it's like as, you know, being in this industry of communications marketing as a woman and, you know, her experiences. It was just such a fulfilling event that we all went to and we really enjoyed it. So kudos to AAF and to Amanda. And then we have a big campaign coming up in March, My Library, My Story. It's really just sharing a variety of testimonials of patrons coming in and talking what, talking about what the library means to them, whether it's someone who's taking ukulele lessons. She's a retired person and she wants to learn how to play Happy Birthday for her granddaughter. Or it's someone who got off of a flight directly from the airport and did not know where to go. Phone was about to die and she needed a place to know that she was going to be okay to wait until her school orientation at Gonzaga. So there are a variety of different experiences that people have with the library and this campaign really packages them together in order to share that with the community and then invites them to share their stories with us in return. So we're working with local coffee shops to have coffee sleeves where you can scan a QR code and share your story. We have bookmarks, we have these video campaign elements. And then we'll also have kind of more of an in-person exhibit portion. So be on the lookout for that by the next, by our next board meeting, you'll see those elements in play. And that's it for the marketing report. Thanks. Any questions? Great. Well, we've got five committed, six Derailleur Coffee in Hilliard, Jupiter's Eye Cafe, New Leaf, of course, and then Rocket Market and another, a fifth one. And maybe, I can't remember all of them because there's quite a few that have said yes. So it's really exciting. Yes, yeah. New Love, that's one. Yep. Yes, thank you. I think there's one more, but I'm forgetting.
How did you find them? Were these people who came to us or did we go to them?
We approached them. We also reached out to local community organizations. You know, the NAACP Latinos and, or Nuestras Raisas, which is our community, our roots, community center. Formerly the Hispanic Business and Professionals Association, or that's a branch of Nuestras Raisas. And, and then we also reached out to local influencers to hop on social media and really share about their library story, their stories about how books and libraries changed their lives to really amplify the messaging that libraries can really make a difference. So that'll all be happening next month. Yeah?
Good. Thanks. For January, we're, I went up to 356 events, 4,787 people came. I really want to talk more about kind of the 2024 recap, which you have to top there. We had a total of 4,249 events offered in the year. That comes out to an average of 11.6 events a day, which is nuts. Almost 70,000 people came to programs this year. It was up from, I think it's up about 15, 40,000, 50,000 from last year. If you take out the specialty one-on-ones, the 2,371 of those from that total programs, we averaged about 36 people per event. Obviously, 8,000 people showing up to tacos and tequila brings that average up significantly. But still showing that a lot of people showing up to our programs. There's about a 50/50 split, adult program dependence and youth program, and you factor in Storytime and youth programs. So that was kind of interesting this year too. Yeah, you can see there's a lot of, a lot of numbers on there from 2024. Doesn't seem to be slowing down for us. Any questions?
I have a question about the music lessons.
Yeah.
Are these, are those 777 repeaters or are these individual folks so that they're all...
There's some are repeated. There's some people that take them multiple lessons. That's just 777 total lessons. We're trying, that is one thing we're trying to look at, is putting a cap this year on how many lessons can be taken by one individual. There are a few people who show up weekly and maybe aren't making a ton of progress that we should be probably making room for more people, so yeah.
Okay.
But I'd say probably half of that is individuals.
Thank you.
She can't send up the weekly lesson sheet.
I'd just like to know, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else who goes? Okay. Well, now we're up to new business. And you can't say new business without characters, so.
We will do this. So last month, I presented to the board a proposal for updating our library hours to Monday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Sunday, 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM. We are proposing this because the hours in this formation are reallocated to better match community needs, focusing on mornings and weekends, creates a simplified and consistent schedule that's easy to remember, provides greater accessibility during high-traffic times. It maintains the same number of hours per week and results in cost savings by reducing underutilized evening hours. So the reason why we're changing this is back when we set the existing hours, the whole idea was that once we got going in our new branches and saw some of the usage patterns would be like, we would come back and update them. So that is exactly what we're doing. There was a plethora of data that was applied to the board for perusal, including hourly visitors, circulation and computer usage, community feedback, and cost savings. So with that in mind, we are asking the board to either approve or deny the proposed hours effective June 1st.
Any comments, questions, concerns? Anyone? Okay. Do we need to do a motion on this? All right, so we have a motion with the library board requesting to approve the proposed hours effective June 1st, 2025.
Move to approve the proposed hours effective June 1st, 2025.
Thank you.
Second motion.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor of saying aye, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. We are done.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the work on all that data you pulled from that too, Gary.
Glad I don't have to look at it anymore.
Okay, so EPA Community Change Grant.
I'm back.
Hello.
Hi. Okay, so this one will require action as well. For the EPA Community Change Grant, also known as the Spokane Climate Resilience Project. Some background on this one, so we are listed as a subawardee in addition to the City of Spokane as one entity. Gonzaga is the person, is the group that's actually applied for this grant, has been awarded the grant. Their total, the grant is federally funded in the amount of $2 billion. It's from the US Environmental Protection Agency. So what Gonzaga was approved for was $19,904,367 for the Spokane Climate Resilience Project overall. So the City of Spokane, also meaning the Spokane Public Library, as a subrecipient for the projects. The total is going to cover five buildings. It's going to be $7,694,409. They've got some earmarked amount for PMO and indirect costs of just under $400,000. And then the City of Spokane buildings totaling three are going to be $3 million, about $3,800,000. And then the Spokane Public Library branches are the other two of the five total locations. Our central branch is estimated to be $2,942,400 and the Liberty Park branch is $1,397,848. So these are resilience hubs. On the next page, I do have a list of what the different hubs are, but there's going to be a total of five relief hubs in Spokane. So you can see the West Central Community Center, the Northeast Community Center, and the Carl Maxi Center are the three city buildings. And then the central Liberty Park branch are the two buildings identified that are library-owned. These are, these were identified, as you can see in orange here, as the disadvantaged community neighborhood areas. So that's why those two branches were, were selected as locations for this. So essentially what's going, what this project entails is that we will have backup battery located at each of these sites. Top of the side is probably a 90s Buick. We will have solar panel, we will have solar panels installed at Liberty Park and then we're going to have an additional solar panel extension to what we currently have here at this bridge. That's kind of in a nutshell what, what those projects look like. If you turn the page, you can see the levels of the overall Spokane resilience project. The total of the Level 2 relief hubs, so again, it's solar battery backup, HVAC filtering. There's going to be device charging and basic first aid at some of the locations. And then, so that's basically what we are supporting, the two of our spots. The other scope of that almost $20 million project is going to be 10 Level 1 and 8 hub, which, which have a little bit different role. So we're right in the middle there. Let's see. I do want to point out, there, there's just some background, you can use some reading here, but I do want to point out that the City of Spokane Council did approve this project on February 10th of, of this month. There's an ordinance, it's also supplemental to this packet behind that, that's the ordinance that they approved. So I just want to be very transparent in what this project entails. This is not a cost to library, so it's established with the Grant Office on budget code that will essentially create a liability account. So the funds will not affect our cash in any way. This is just approving those projects to our abilities. We have talked, in talks with Gonzaga, they are standing by this grant and supporting it financially. At this time, there's no indication of any cancellation of the federal portion of the dollars, but we're moving forward with Gonzaga, provided that you approve.
So Gonzaga's been awarded, I know they were awarded the funding, but have they received the funding?
They have not received any funding, just awarded.
Gotcha.
Yep. There's, there's a lot of federal requirements when it comes to federal grants as far as what you report to that agency in order to get those, those funds reimbursed.
I know there's been a lot of backlog and pushback with federal funding right now through the portal that is utilized. So that's what I was wondering.
Yep.
If they've received any funds.
I knew that question would come out.
Yeah.
So they have answers or no then?
They, they haven't received any dollars. That's right. It's going to be on a reimbursement kind of basis for them, provided that they get into proper paperwork and reporting that's required. But we are just a subawardee of that. But we are just a subawardee of that project. And so our funding comes directly from Gonzaga University regardless of what their reimbursement.
And they are taking on that.
Yeah, so that was my question. Do we see any risk in them not receiving their reimbursement and not having an impact on? Sorry. So Gonzaga is saying we're moving forward regardless. And how did the city, I mean, I've read some through the ordinance and background materials, but is there an actual contractual agreement then between the university and the city then on the funding?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Whether or without the actual $100,000 coming through?
That part is not part of the contract. That's just been a verbal.
Okay, yeah, I didn't see it, so.
Now that's a great question.
Hey, any other questions?
I do have, sorry, I do have one more question. Just I just want to make sure I understand this in terms of any expenditure that will occur for like solar panels and batteries that the library that the library will not be, will be city dollars, not library dollars.
The capital project portion, as far as what the maintenance and additional costs is to the library once this goes into operation. So currently, the city, sorry, the solar panels cost that we absorb here at the central is actually directly billed to the state. So we're not paying for that portion. This should tie onto that because it's going to go through these same meters. If anything changes, then I will let you guys know, but at this point in time, any of the operating costs are fully known, but the utility side of it, we shouldn't see anything.
Right, but on the construction side?
Construction side, there will be no costs.
Okay, this is going directly to the city? Thank you.
It's a complicated.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
If you need time to absorb it, we can always do an action item at a later meeting.
Let's do that.
Yeah, I'm going to be hopeful. Would that pull up Gonzaga being able to submit proper paperwork?
No. So what's happening is city is hiring a temporary employee who's going to begin the request for proposals. And so it's going to be a big packet that goes out to the public, which will include all of the five buildings as one project. So that contract is not even supposed to be awarded.
The city's moving forward with that project.
Right.
So they're, they're all in.
So are moving this to next month, balled away, and?
If we decide not to move forward with it, it would just modify their request for proposals to only move their three.
All right, so then we don't need to approve this. We can just put it up.
We're not comfortable. Yeah.
All right, let's do that.
And I can send you some more information on that grant.
All right, Alina, we're back to you.
Excellent. All right, we will show you the annual report. I have just a quick statement afterwards and then there's no action needed on this one. It's just an awareness and low-key bragging, but you'll see.
What the annual report is for?
That's exactly right. Give me a second. Yeah. It's not happening, so here we go. Excellent job on that, Skylar.
Thank you.
Okay. And then I just wanted to articulate something about the fact that we carry a profound responsibility to foster opportunity, provide access, and amplify representation within our community. Our 2024 numbers tell a powerful story, but what matters most is the impact behind them. None of this happens without our dedicated staff, our partners, and the people who walk through our doors every day. As we look ahead, we remain committed to ensuring the library continues to be a place of learning, opportunity, and a community for all. Any questions?
Are we going to film you saying that? Promotional, what the library means.
No, that's just for you guys.
I think that's a great message.
It is recorded. There you go. Yeah. Wait, the audio.
Sorry, tell the story then.
Yeah.
Thank you. Gina. Welcome back.
Thank you. All right, so I am going to talk about teens. Okay, so I'm Gina. I did a new term of this brand and I worked with our teen population. And we have events every week for teens, but every once in a while, I like to do a special event. And the one coming up that I wanted to talk about is our cooking competition. Yeah, so last year we did one and it was called Will It Waffle? And we hosted two of these events. It was in March, on the 26th and the 27th at Indian Trail and Liberty Park. We had an attendance of 15 at Indian Trail and 12 at Liberty Park. We probably could have got more, but we had registration on this event. So, you know, people register and it fills up, but not everybody comes. So I think that's kind of what happens there. But this year, we're going to try something different and not do registration and see what we get. All right. All right, so the way that this event is designed is this time we had across 16 participants and that was kind of the goal. The goal had two groups. One group is the chefs and one group is the judges. And the group of chefs are divided up into teams of two. And they're all competing against each other to make a great dish. This one is waffles. And so they'll each spend time as judges in the first round, and then as chefs, then they'll swap halfway through. And so everyone will get to do each thing and they get to taste the creations of their peers. All right, so some of the things they had access to at this event was a waffle maker. And they got a base mix. So they got to choose here. They got to choose the waffle mix for cake chips or cookie dough or pizza dough. And if it's really interesting, see what they chose. They also got to have a bunch of random ingredients like whipped cream, pepperoni, chocolate chips. There was spam, there was syrup. There's all kinds of things. So they got to choose. And these are some of the creations they came up with and I was really, really excited to see that they were all different and they were trying to plate it with like drizzle or like stamp up the waffles. And we got some interesting combinations, like the one in the middle is chocolate cake with whipped cream and pineapple. So that looks really great. And I have lots of pictures of them presenting and sharing their creations. I know I mentioned this a couple times, but this was kind of a fun part of this program is here in this picture on the top left. You can see them making something, but there's a parent in the window. So this was at Indian Trail. In Indian Trail, the meeting room was pretty small. So with the old equipment and all the teenagers and the tables, there wasn't room to allow spectators or parents. But they were people through the windows the whole time, which was really cute. And something that was really great about this program, on the far right, there's the two boys and they're holding their creation. Something they have them do before, when they finish their, whatever they made, and they share it with the judges. I have them stand up, tell us what they made, kind of a little bit about their process, the name if it has one. And so that gives them the ability to, you know, explain what they did, communicate what they did, and also to kind of get some public speaking practice in. So these are just some more pictures. They had such a good time and we had a lot of different people. This is another picture on the right of all the parents outside that had to run outside and take a picture because it was really funny. They were all bunched up outside watching. And it was a two-hour program. They were there the whole time. It was pretty great. And we got some good feedback online, too. This was just a post made by our communications team, just kind of sharing out the event. And we had a parent say, I'm pretty sure, with best public library system in the world, he wants programming, which is a program that, you know, feels really great. We want people enjoying your program, so that was some really awesome feedback. So this year, we're doing something different and we're going to do the ultimate Uncrustable. I'm pleased. I'm excited about this one. I think it's going to turn out great. And if you don't know what an Uncrustable is, it's like a sandwich with a press cut off, but pressed together with the filling inside. So kind of like a sandwich dumpling type thing, but whole pressed together. Yeah, so I think it's going to be really fun. They can choose whatever filling. And so each team will have access to the Uncrustable cutters. They'll have access to, we got a couple of hair fliers, because when I was researching this, I heard people putting their Uncrustables in hair fliers and that sounded so fun. And it sounded like a very teenager-type snack, so we had to try it. So they're going to get those as well as a bunch of miscellaneous cooking tools. And they'll start with their bread base, white bread, wheat bread, blueberry bread. They can put things like mayo and mustard and cream cheese or hummus or maybe some of those together. Who knows what they'll do? And then main ingredients of sandwich meat, pickles and cheese and, gosh, whatever they can think of, banana, blueberries. And then we always have the spices if they want to throw some spice in there. All right, so the structure will be the same as last year, similar, pretty close. This is a typo. It didn't mean say maximum, 16 participants. That's what we kind of, our goal was for last year, but we're opening that up with no registration to see how many we get. We'll still have four teams of chefs, but you know, maybe if we have a little bit more, we'll have three kids per team or something like that. So we can always adjust it just a bit. But we'll still have two rounds where they each get to be judges and chefs. And this is a fun picture of our judging table where they're getting ready to, you know, tell everybody what they think about each dish, which they each got a chance to say what they thought and rank it with a star rating and share their comments. And this picture's fun, too, because you can see this is Liberty Park and the parents are still outside watching and very excited about the event. And so I want to leave you with when we're doing this. So we're going to do it in April this year at Liberty Park on the 19th from 2 to 4 and people play sticks at Indian Trail. Any questions, though?
Oh, there are many. But let's start with one of the easy ones first.
Sure.
When the kids come in, are you making sure that if they have different things, that different allergens that they can swap out or move around?
Yes, there's an allergy announcement up front, so if there is something that we brought, just in case, we can pull it out. I also never bring anything nuts just to put them on an allergic allergy. But yes, there is an allergy announcement.
Well, important question. What was your favorite waffle creation?
You know, I didn't actually take too many more. I loved that to the teenagers. They got to try them. But there were some pretty cool looking ones.
And then I have one thought, just from our special meeting that we had last month. We're talking about workforce development. And it might be interesting in the future with these, because these are so cool, to see if there's any local chefs who would be interested in being like a celebrity judge for them. And it would be a cool opportunity for kids to learn from like a local chef, like what their career pathway looks like so that they could see that as an option for them as a teenager as well.
Yeah.
It's just food for that, the food classes.
I like it. Well, we can do more in the future, too, so maybe next time.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment?
Nope.
Wow, that was fast. Check the characters first. Okay, our next meeting is March 18th, 2025 at Indian Trail. Do we have an executive session today? All right, then it appears as if we are adjourned.